Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting of December 19th, 2016. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Yes ma'am. Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald, will you please lay this in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to our Board of Education meeting this evening. As I mentioned a moment ago, this is our general meeting, and what that means is that the items that are coming before the Board this evening have been discussed at typically two meetings at least before they come to this Board tonight for a vote. Sometimes they have been discussed for many, many months, as is in the case of a few of our motions that are going to be before us this evening. Therefore, with many of the items that are coming before the Board this evening, you may or may not see the amount of discussion that you would expect before a vote. Please understand that that is not because these items are not being taken lightly, but rather it's because these items have been discussed many, many times before they come to a vote this evening. If you're interested in discussion that the Board of Education has before we bring items to a voting meeting, I do strongly suggest that you tune into our Committee of the Whole Meetings. Those are found on our website also. In our Committee of the Whole Meetings, or our Study Session Meetings, we go over items in great detail. And then once the discussion has been had and there is nothing further that we feel that we need to discuss on an item, we bring it forth for a voting meeting, which is where we are this evening. So all of the items, and there is quite a list of items that'll be voted on this evening, have been discussed at multiple meetings so far. If you would like to follow along with an agenda, they can be found, if you're in our room this evening, the agendas can be found just outside the door on the table, along with our blue slips for Audience Communications. If you do intend on participating in Audience Communications, if you could fill out a blue slip, and at this time make sure that it gets to the end of our table to Mrs. Jarvis, she'll make sure that it gets brought down to me, so that way we can make certain that everyone who wishes to participate has the opportunity to do so. If you are following along from home and would like to follow along with an agenda this evening, our agendas can also be found on our website, and that can be found at If you hover over our Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along with this evening's agenda. As is customary when we have honorees of the evening, we are going to take a slight break for about five minutes, and that break is going to come after Item 3B. We have the opportunity to recognize two very special ladies this evening. This is our last Board meeting for two of our very important Board Trustees, Mrs. Diane Laura and Mrs. Eileen McDonald. Both of these ladies have served for a number of years. Mrs. McDonald has served for five years on this Board of Education. Mrs. Laura has served for over nine years, in two separate periods on our Board of Education. They bring a wealth of experience to our Board, and they are very valued members of our team. We will have the opportunity to honor them this evening, and therefore afterward we will take about a five-minute break, as is customary, so that we can congratulate our honorees. Again, that break will come after Item 3B. Let's see here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is 3A, recognition of Board Vice President Diane Laura. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution acknowledging the significant contributions Diane Laura has made to the well-being of the school district, its students and employees, and to congratulate and thank her for her dedicated public service.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there questions or comments from the Board before I go to the podium with Mrs. Laura? We have something special to present this evening. At this time? Okay. Mrs. Laura, if you'd join me at the podium.
It is my honor this evening to congratulate and thank Diane Laura for her service. And that service has come twice, to our Board of Education and to our school district. We are very blessed, as a district, to have Diane. I did not know Diane at all when she began her second round of Board service, and I got to know Diane quickly and very, very well. And Diane is a lady who I respect greatly. Diane's professional experience is in the field of education. Diane was a teacher, she was a principal, so she comes to us with a wealth of experience, boots on the ground, as I like to say. And that experience is wise. That's the best word that I can use for Diane. Diane is not our chattiest Board member, but I'll tell you, I have heard from so many people, when Diane has a comment, we stop and listen. Because it's not on every item, and Diane has frequently said, if it's already been said, I'm not going to say it again. But I'll tell you, when Diane wants to add something to the conversation, it is worth our pause and our listening to, because it comes with a wealth of experience and a heart for children and their education. I will miss having you on the Board, Diane. You have been such wise counsel to the rest of us. You have been jokingly but seriously called our historian, because you have years of experience that go back to serving on the Board in the 1990s. So you've known what it's like to serve in years of plenty and in years of want. And that has served our school district so well to have you on our Board. At this time, I would like to read our retirement resolution for Diane Laura. Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School District are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of Board members who have given of their time and talents as service to others. And whereas in serving in that position, Diane Laura contributed greatly to the well-being of the Livonia Public Schools School District, its employees and its students, by serving as the Vice President and Secretary of the Board, as well as Chairperson for the Personnel, Finance and Curriculum Committees during her most recent four-year term. And whereas Diane Laura served the residents of the Livonia Public Schools School District well, by placing their needs and interests of public education and students first, in making informed and conscientious decisions in the vital area of public education. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School District do hereby commend and congratulate Diane Laura for five years of service during this most recent term, and a total of nine and a half years of dedicated public service overall.
Congratulations. For Diane, we have a copy of the resolution you may keep. And we also have a gift for you. You can open up, like.
Thank you.
If you'd like, or you can...
I'm gonna spoil it.
Yeah.
I'll let her know.
Okay, alrighty.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few words for Diane.
I'm short on words.
Thank you for those kind words, Colleen. I would, I'd like to say it's been nothing but an honor and a privilege to serve on this Board, and I want to say some thanks. First of all, I want to thank our wonderful Cabinet, and our very accommodating, lovely, hard-working secretary, our fantastic superintendent, and you, our Board. You're so outstanding and so committed, and so very professional. You have all given me so much to make my stay here so, the best that it could be, and I really appreciate it, and thank you for that. I'd like to, most of all, thank the voters. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve not just once, but twice on this excellent School Board of Education for this wonderful district. At the end of this meeting, this concludes, as Mrs. Burton said, nine-plus years for me. I first started in the 90s, and as Mrs. Burton also said, it was a very abundant surplus time compared to the last five years of our service, which we were facing many financial challenges at the time. But during these times, I learned so much and gathered so much wisdom and knowledge from everyone. I really think I gained more than I could ever possibly give to this Board. I need to thank my family for their support, their understanding, and their constant encouragement. A special thank you goes out to my husband Joe, who's sitting here in the front, my daughter Christie next to him, her husband, my son-in-law Dan, and my grandson Ian. Thank you for taking time from your busy schedule to be here today, it means a lot. This is certainly a bittersweet ending. Sure, I'm gonna have withdrawals every Monday night for a long time, but I look at the sweetness side of it, and I'm hoping to be able to continue with my love of travel. And as my Board members and colleagues know, I won't have to cut my travels short to come back on a Monday to attend Board meetings. I hope for the best in the coming times, and my parting wish for you is to continue to grow and to always experience success. I'm gonna miss you all so much. Thank you.
Mr. Centers?
I just want to thank Diane. So I've been on the Board about two and a half years, but I was originally appointed, and it's right in the middle of the year, there's not transition time, you gotta be ready next week, and everyone on the Board at the time was very friendly, but Diane really went out of her way to make me feel comfortable, acclimate me to the district, and we've developed a great friendship, and I really value that, so thank you so much, Diane.
Any other comments from Board members? Mrs. Oakwest.
Well, Trustee Laura and I have known each other for a number of years, first as fellow elementary principals during your first tenure on the Board, and now at this time. One of the things that I wanted to share about Diane is, you truly have the heart and the mind of an educator, and of an educational leader. That has served our district so well in both of your tenures on the Board. Not only in your work here at the table, but you've participated for many years as part of our choir team, which has been very significant, and you have brought to us not only your knowledge, but appreciation for the work, the tireless work of our staff and our leadership, which has always been so greatly appreciated. So we wish you the very, very best, enjoy your beautiful family, your freedom on Monday evenings and beyond, and we cannot thank you enough for all that you've given in your service to us.
Thank you, Andrea. Are there any other comments? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I would just like to say to Diane, thank you. Thank you for being an inspiration and for all the wisdom that you've imparted. You've done it all, you've seen it all, and it's been a privilege to pick your brain. You're staying on my speed dial.
I'll be happy to.
Comments by the other? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. It's been an honor sitting next to you for the last year. And they talk about her being the historian, and it's so important to have someone with the institutional knowledge that she has, because sometimes we lose track of why we do certain things. And we could always go to Diane and say, you know, tell us how this started, tell us how that started. And she always had that information for us, and it made all of us better Board members, and it will be in the future, and we're gonna miss you dearly, sweetie.
Comments by the other Board members? Mrs. McDonald?
Congratulations, Diane. And I think Diane and I both will look forward to spending, having a little more free time, and yes, we'll take up that dinner invitation and meet. Thank you again for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
I think I'll abstain.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. President Burton?
Yes.
And the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Diane. Our next item on our agenda is Item 3B, recognition of Board Trustee Eileen McDonald. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution acknowledging the significant contributions Eileen McDonald has made to the well-being of the school district, its students and employees, and to congratulate and thank her for her dedicated public service.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mr. Johnson, I believe, is going to take care of our resolution.
I am.
We can have Mr. Johnson and Mrs. McDonald at the podium. Yes.
There we go. Now you get your kudos. On behalf of the Board, we wanna, we wanna thank you, and, you know, a lot of people may not realize that for a number of years, Eileen would come to the meetings and talk, and she would fill out a blue slip, and she had a lot to say. And she decided at one point in time, well, maybe I'll try and sit behind the table. And she took the plunge. I don't know whether she now regrets that or not.
No, not at all.
But it's, you've always brought your own perspective to the Board, and it's sometimes different than the Board. It has always been a unique perspective, and you've spoken for the people and your constituents, and I think we all appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're hoping that, you know, you're gonna get your Monday nights back now, so if you wanna watch the Board, you can do so on your couch and in your pajamas, and maybe even have a drink if you wanted to. Maybe. And we wish you all the best in whatever you decide to do from this point forward. Keep us advised.
I will.
And let me read the resolution. Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School District are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of Board members who have given of their time and talents as service to others, and whereas in serving in that position, Eileen McDonald contributed greatly to the well-being of the Livonia Public Schools School District, its employees and its students, by serving as Chairperson of the Finance, Legislative and Curriculum Committees, and whereas Eileen McDonald served the residents of the Livonia Public Schools School District well by placing the needs and interests of public education and students first in making informed and conscientious decisions in the vital areas of public education. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School District do hereby commend and congratulate Eileen McDonald for five years of dedicated public service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We likewise have a copy of the resolution, all framed, and your gift as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mark.
Your podium is yours.
Pass this over here.
He was my armchair, or quarterback. I'd sit at home and fatigue. Thank you for this kind recognition. It's been a wonderful experience. I don't regret a minute of this. And yes, I do look forward to having my Mondays back to hang around the house with Bob, and we'll, we'll see how that goes. No. So anyway, I am very honored about this acknowledgement this evening. I know that some of you have been disappointed that I'm leaving the Board, but don't worry, I'll be watching from the sidelines. I plan on continuing to be an advocate for our children, and we'll work to bring awareness and change for those who are especially in need and most vulnerable. Our district is such an important part of our community, it's our foundation. In fact, every citizen should keep this as their focus, no matter what happens this evening, and what status you are in this community, whether you're a parent, grandparent, or don't have children at all. It's so very, very important that this school district stays strong and everybody stands behind it. I would like to congratulate our two new Board members. I don't know where they're sitting, but Karen Bradford and Crystal Frank on their election. They have a really big job ahead of them, and welcome. And one bit of advice to you both, if I didn't know something or wanted to get information, Google. Google is your friend. So my husband Bob, daughter Ally, my son Jeff, he's in school taking an exam tonight. He said he'd try to get here, but I told him exam's more important. So thank you for listening to me for the past five years, and I look forward to spending some time with you, Bob, and on Monday evenings, and hopefully we'll get to plan some long weekends. Up in the cottage, it'll be good. Since we really haven't had that option for the last 11 years, since the Legacy Initiative came to be in 2005, and thank you for putting up with us, even though I know sometimes you thought I was a little crazy. I cannot forget about my friends and former Board member Marge Rose. Marge doesn't get out much these days, she's got some eye issues and she can't drive anymore, but thank you for being my, my support and trying to keep me grounded, because she would bring me down a notch if she thought I was getting a little out of hand. So thank you, Marge. And one big last thank you to my supporters who took the time to wish me well, and since I really don't wanna spend a lot of time, we have a lot to do this evening, and I think it's important to hear from the community. So thank you, and congratulations to everybody for being here tonight, and have happy holidays. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from Board members at this time? I need to say there are. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Eileen and to thank you for your gift for attention to detail, something that I envy. I've learned a lot from you about reading the fine print and looking at things very, very closely, and I hope to carry that forward in your absence.
Thank you, I wish I would, and thank you. Nice compliment.
Other comments from other Board members? Mrs. Oakwest.
Trustee Centers, would you like to go first?
Okay.
Oh, I just wanna say that I've always been seatmates with Eileen, and I started two and a half years ago, down at the end there, and every meeting, no matter what, you know, things can be stressful, but Eileen always greets you with a smile.
Thank you.
And, you know, talks about, it's about my family, and, you know, it's a very nice reminder of, you know, that we, we're all here and for a common purpose, and I personally appreciate your personal nature, Eileen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, President Burton. Eileen, thank you so much for your service for five years, and especially for bringing another perspective and opening our eyes a little bit. It was a great, great quality that made us stop and think, and thank you for doing that for us, and you and I will spend some of our Monday nights together.
Alright, thank you.
Comments from other Board members? Superintendent Oakwest?
Well, Trustee McDonald, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for, I think, over 12 or 13 years, from when you were a parent at Taylor.
Ally was in kindergarten.
Ally at Taylor, when I was principal, your beautiful daughter, and we had the opportunity to partner together in her education. We have a connection through your husband Bob, who was our son's first hockey instructor, and started his love for hockey at five, and you have spent a tremendous amount of time prior to being on the Board, as well as on the Board, focused on your service and your study. Mrs. Jarvis, you talked about attention to detail, and I would certainly echo that. I think that's something that not only Mrs. McDonald expects of herself, but that she values in the work of others, and in the work of our, of our Board and of our administration. So we thank you for all of your dedication prior to and since you've been on the Board, and we wish you and your family well as you get some of that well-deserved time back. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Oakwest.
I'd like to also echo, Eileen, your attention to detail. It's, it has been evident over, over the years of service, and for those of you who may not be aware, being a member of the Board of Education takes an immense amount of time. And, yes, smiles and nods.
Yes.
But it takes a lot of time to simply be on the Board, it takes an immense amount of time to really pore over details of the volume that, that we need to do to, to study deeply before we come to, to discuss these items. And you did exactly that, and, and you are an example of doing so, and that is appreciated on this Board of Education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Burton.
Any other comments before we vote on our motion before us? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Let's see. Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations. As we announced at the beginning of the meeting, at this time, we will take about a five-minute break or so, so that those in the audience can congratulate our honorees of the evening. We will resume our meeting in about five minutes. General Meeting of December 19th, 2016. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3C, Written Communications. Do any board members have written communications that they would like to share with the board? Seeing none, at this time, we will go to Item 3D, Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time set aside for the board to listen to members of our community. It is not a question-and-answer session, but rather a time for us to listen to whatever comments the community may have. Let's see here. We have, let's see, Audience Communications lasts, we, sorry, we have allotted the Audience Communications three minutes per person. The reason that we have that time limit is so that there's an adequate amount of time for each person to speak and so that we can be fair to everybody who is speaking to the board at any given time. We do ask that when you are speaking to the board, if you can honor the three-minute time limit. Mr. Johnson has been our timekeeper. And what, if you hear a beep go off, you know that you have hit your three minutes. And if you could conclude your comments at that time, we would appreciate it. We have found that a timer is a little bit more polite way rather than interrupting a speaker. So if you hear that beep, you can wrap up your comments. Again, we would appreciate it. Our first speaker this evening is Edmund Kombay, I'm sorry, Kombay. And I'm sure I've mispronounced your last name. I'm sorry.
Kombay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mrs. McDonald, congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate your hard work. Mrs. Laura, the same. Congratulations. We appreciate it. I like to start everything off with wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. As many of you know, I'm here on behalf of Cass Elementary. I'd like to talk a little bit about some things. I'd like to specifically start the conversation about consideration two, closing Cass and Garfield. I'd like to point out that there's an anticipated sinking funds amount of some unsubstantial amount of money, like $5.4 million. I want to point out that under that consideration, that is over 10 years. That is not an exact amount of money that's going to go into the general fund at one time. So over that timeframe, you're looking at $546,000 a year in savings. If we add that to the $800,000 of savings that you're going to get in operation cost savings for closing both those schools, we come out to roughly $1,346,000. Now, if we look at that number, right, that's a big number. But if we look at that number within the budget of LPS, at $145,000, say $145 million, that only comes out to 1%, less than 1% of your general budget a year. Okay. So we've kind of, we've kind of based, put that out there. Let's talk about how closing Cass and Garfield's going to save us money, all right? Cass has roughly 60 school-choice families there right now, okay? This is, these are things that Plank Moran couldn't take in consideration because they couldn't pull the numbers out with them. But those 60 school-choice kids whose parents chose Cass over their home schools, drive their kids to and from those schools every day, those parents, if Cass was to be eliminated from the district, would they stay?
Nope.
If they, if they don't stay, if they don't stay, and we say, okay, 60 kids, we put a number value on this. Say we get $10,000 from the state in funding and wherever else it comes, per pupil. So we're losing $600,000 now because those families are gone, out of the district. And that's a year we lose that money, right? So let's talk a little bit more on how we're going to save money, all right? So we'll take that 600 away from the, you know, $1,346 that we're saving by closing both schools. Now we have $746,000 that we're saving. Okay, it's still a substantial amount of money, right? Well, let's talk about that a little bit. Since we began this debate, you've heard from dozens of families coming here telling you that they moved to Livonia within Cass's boundaries just to go to Cass. Those are people that brought their $10,000 out of the district, into the district, into Cass specifically. So if we, if we look at, okay, dozens, maybe 20 of those families are going to leave or wouldn't have ever come to the district. So if we look at those 20, let's, let's, let's put that figure on. There's 20 of them, and it's roughly, eh, $300,000 we lose. So now, our amount of money that we started with, with this $1.346 million, is now down to $446,000. I've also heard that under Garfield...
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
After Garfield closes, we're going to lose Title I funding. Is that the rest of the money that we're going to save by closing Cass and Garfield? Bond money. Let's, give me a minute here. I'll be done.
I'm sorry. I really do need to ask that you wrap up your comments so that I can be fair to all of the speakers.
Bond money was promised. It was promised to us. It was promised to the neighborhoods of Cass and Garfield. It was promised to help educate the community. It was, it was to draw young families in as seniors left. It was to help build our schools up. It was to help those neighborhoods, and it was promised to them. Do you guys really want to be, do you really want to end this school year on being the people that decided to close the school and not save money? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Daniel Torenzi. I'm sorry. The next speaker is Danny Torenzi. Excuse me, Mr. Torenzi, before you begin, I would like to ask that while we have a speaker Welcome back to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education speaking, whether they are an audience member or a board member or a member of our administration, if we could refrain from shouting out, that would be appreciated. It's a sign of respect to whomever is speaking. Thank you. May I go ahead?
My name is Danny Torenzi, and greetings to everyone here at Livonia Public School Board, as well as members of the community. Many of you on the board right now may recognize me as the one who sent you the email regarding the twins, one in general ed and one in the Centers program. In that email, I stated about how separating the Centers program from general ed will force my family to make a choice from one of the following options. One, have both my children go to Randolph and let my daughter suffer from being away from her friends because of an affliction towards my son. The other option would be have both my children go to Buchanan and have my son suffer from being away from his friends and not receive the necessary, the amazing services received by the Centers program, such as provided by Ms. Longworth and Ms. Coggins. They did an excellent job with my son, and he's making amazing progress because of it. Or three, separating my twins and having my son's performance perhaps be compromised due to the separation anxiety from his sister. You can see my dilemma. I have been told by your board members that the human factor weighs heavy on this vote. Judging by the support received to Cass to keep Cass open, it would be hard for me to believe that a vote to close would support that comment. Please don't make me choose between my twins. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Lloyd Romick.
Good evening. You're looking here at a funding problem, or at least what you perceive to be a funding problem. The real problem is not what money you're going to get in. That's going to be what the state gives you, and there's no option about it. What you have is a spending problem. We can afford 31 administrators making six figures, but we can't afford to keep Cass open. We can afford your own public relations specialist rather than just have the superintendent do it, but we can't keep Garfield open. There is money in the district. You're going to have to make hard choices, and that means hard choices for people. 90-plus percent of your money is salaries. But the choice you're going to make is do you do what's best for the kids, or do you do what's the easiest thing? What's not going to have people yelling at you, or at least wise people other than parents? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sherri Prush.
Hi, guys. It's nice to see you all again. Hi, I'm coming to you today to specifically speak on the comment of bricks and mortar. This has been gone over and over again in my head. I heard it when Perrinville closed, and if I hear it again, I'm just going to scream. Let me explain to you that when you take an excellent staff like you had at Perrinville and now is broken up into other buildings, or that you have at Cass Center, when I walk in the door at Cass, every teacher in that building gets that my kid might have a meltdown. Every teacher in that building understands what kids with special needs need. When I walk into Roosevelt, as hard as they try, that is not the case. And the reason is this: you took a staff from Perrinville and tripled their workload. They walked into that building and were then responsible to help people become understanding and help people learn acceptance of kids that are severely disabled. And while you're doing that, you're still expecting them to meet those IEP goals. So now, where my kid might have been up here, now she's here. And they're doing their best. They're really trying, and the staff is amazing. You keep talking about how transitions take time. I'm telling you, my kid does not have that time. You expect during certain transitions, kids to lose and regress, and I understand that. When Kylie went from Perrinville in preschool over to, well, first of all, she moved from Perrinville ASD program to Perrinville ECP, and she had issues transitioning there. But the Perrinville team was still a team. So it was really easy to encourage her and help them figure it out and make it successful. When she got to Cass, she lost her language. And she had to talk on her iPad for a while again, and I was completely distraught over it. Now, this year, she's soaring. She moved a grade level in reading, you know, she moved up in her reading level. She met all of her goals on her report card. She's meeting standards. Can't tell you what that means to me as a parent. But I have debated, next year, when she moves schools again, if you make this choice, she's going to lose her voice again. It's to be expected. She's going to stop meeting milestones, meeting those expectations that the district has set forth, you know, the state of Michigan sets forth. She's going to stop meeting those again. And I've already held her back a year, so now am I going to have to homeschool so that she can always be held back? It is not fair. An entire community has been raised this way. The Cass community knows. Everybody there gets it. And when you break it up and call it bricks and mortar, you're doing a disservice to your staff, your families. You need to stop doing that. My kid's education is, yes, more than bricks and mortar. Cass is a community.
Our next speaker is Lauren Peters. Ms. Peters? from general ed will force my family to make a choice from one of the following options. One, have both my children go to Randolph and let my daughter suffer from being away from her friends because of an affliction towards my son. The other option would be have both my children go to Buchanan and have my son suffer from being away from his friends and not receive the necessary, the amazing services received by the Centers Program, such as, as provided by Ms. Longworth and Ms. Coggins, they did an excellent job with my son and he's making amazing progress because of it. Or three, separating my twins and having my son's performance perhaps be compromised due to the separation anxiety from his sister. You can see my dilemma. I have been told by your board members that the human factor weighs heavy on this vote. Judging by the support received to CAS to keep CAS open, it would be hard for me to believe that a vote to close would support that comment. Please don't make me choose between my twins. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Lloyd Romick.
Good evening. You're looking here at a funding problem, or at least what you perceive to be a funding problem. The real problem is not what money you're gonna get in. That's gonna be what the state gives you and there's no option about it. What you have is a spending problem. We can afford 31 administrators making six figures, but we can't afford to keep CAS open. We can afford your own public relations specialist rather than just have the superintendent do it. But we can't keep Garfield open. There is money in the district. You're gonna have to make hard choices, and that means hard choices for people. 90-plus percent of your money is salaries. But the choice you're gonna make is do you do what's best for the kids? Or do you do what's the easiest thing? What's not going to have people yelling at you? Or at least wise people other than parents? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sherri Prush.
Hi guys, it's nice to see you all again. Hi, I'm coming to you today to specifically speak on the comment of bricks and mortar. This has been gone over and over again in my head. I heard it when Perrinville closed, and if I hear it again, I'm just gonna scream. Let me explain to you that when you take an excellent staff like you had at Perrinville and now is broken up into other buildings, or that you have at CAS Center. When I walk in the door at CAS, every teacher in that building gets that my kid might have a meltdown. Every teacher in that building understands what kids with special needs need. When I walk into Roosevelt, as hard as they try, that is not the case. And the reason is this, you took a staff from Perrinville and tripled their workload. They walked into that building and were then responsible to help people become understanding and help people learn acceptance of kids that are severely disabled. And while you're doing that, you're still expecting them to meet those IEP goals. So now where my kid might have been up here, now she's here. And they're doing their best, they're really trying, and the staff is amazing. You keep talking about how transitions take time. I'm telling you, my kid does not have that time. You expect during certain transitions, kids to lose and regress, and I understand that. When Kylie went from Perrinville in preschool over to, well, first of all, she moved from Perrinville ASD program to Perrinville ECP, and she had issues transitioning there. But the Perrinville team was still a team. So it was really easy to encourage her and help them figure it out and make it successful. When she got to CAS, she lost her language. And she had to talk on her iPad for a while again, and I was completely distraught over it. Now this year, she's soaring. She moved a grade level in reading, you know, she moved up in her reading level, she met all of her goals on her report card, she's meeting standards. Can't tell you what that means to me as a parent. But I have debated, next year, when she moves schools again, if you make this choice, she's gonna lose her voice again. It's to be expected. She's gonna stop meeting milestones, meeting those expectations that the district has set forth, you know, the state of Michigan sets forth. She's gonna stop meeting those again. And I've already held her back a year, so now am I gonna have to homeschool so that she can always be held back? It is not fair. An entire community has been raised this way. The CAS community knows, everybody there gets it. And when you break it up and call it bricks and mortar, you're doing a disservice to your staff, your families. You need to stop doing that. My kid's education is, yes, more than bricks and mortar. CAS is a community.
Our next speaker is Lauren Peters. Ms. Peters?
Please ignore the hideous sweater. It was ugly business sweater day at work, and surprisingly, I did not win, so that tells you what I was hoping in. A couple weeks ago, I sat in the board meeting and listened to Dr. Terrell talk about how the transitions were easy when Perrinville was dismantled. You know, everything went smoothly, and I sit here and I know Sherri and I listen to Sherri, and there's tons of other parents in this room. It did not go smoothly. All of the kids regressed, was extremely hard on all of the families. I have two children in the Center Program at Buchanan. So although I don't want CAS to close, I also don't want Buchanan changed. I have my son, who is autistic, who's been able to make Gen Ed friends after being there for three years. That is a very difficult challenge for kids like him. Now we're talking about moving him to Grant, where we're very familiar with too, because we have a child there and that would be our homeschool. He's gonna start all over again with that process. We're gonna see regression across the board because of that. Then from there, he's gonna go to Johnson, so he's gonna leave all the kids again, and we're gonna start it all over again. When is enough enough? It feels like it's always the special needs programs that are moved first. In 2014, when he started at Buchanan, there was one Center kindergarten. Last year, there were two. This year, there were three Center kindergarten classes. And you guys just finally got a teacher to cover that third class in about the past six weeks. You can say that dismantling Perrinville did not have an effect, but as a parent, when I sit there and see the numbers triple in the past couple years, I have to think it had an effect. You had all of the professionals together in one building. You had all of the kids with different strengths and weaknesses really working with each other, building off of each other, and you separated all those out. And now we have way more kids coming into Center. There's way fewer mainstreaming at that point. I have to sit here and think with where you're gonna move these programs, is there gonna be room for more and more kids entering that? We can all say that more kids are getting diagnosed with these disorders, but the severity is not getting any stronger. So this is a situation where the kids aren't reaching the goals that they would have when that program was together. I just worry, I mean, at Grant, it's already pretty packed. You're talking about getting rid of the community room, about moving SAC to the gym. Is there gonna be more and more kids coming into Center? Or they, how long is that gonna last before Center gets moved again out of there? Another thing too is with SAC. At Buchanan SAC, there are at least two of the four people that are highly trained on special needs at this point. Are you going to move those people to the schools that you move the Center Programs to? Because the SAC staff at Grant is wonderful, but they can't accommodate the special needs kids. I mean, these are young kids working there. They have no experience with children like this. That's terrifying to me. And Eileen, I'm glad you have your Mondays back, but we hope that you and Mr. McDonnell will be coming to Blessings in a Backpack every Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Testa.
I strongly oppose closing of any school until a detailed plan of how to address the root problem we face is made. Closing two schools only saves this much out of a five-gallon bucket. You're not fixing the problem. You're actually creating a bigger problem. As people have already stated, they're gonna leave the district, leave these schools, you're gonna have less people than you had before. Why did I bring up a five-gallon bucket? My son goes to Hoover. Currently, his classroom has five-gallon buckets that the students sit at, because they don't have enough seats. Yet you wanna move 60 more people over there. Francher's not there, so where are they gonna sit? I have a daughter at the CAS Center Program. It's a great school, she's taken very good care of. You need to address the root problem. Voting to close these two schools today doesn't do that. It's irresponsible to do this. You need to solve the major problem at hand.
Our next speaker is Kelly Sarista. I'm sorry, Sirota? Thank you.
Hello. I made a few notes on the fly, I wasn't sure if I was gonna be here, but just to speak to a couple points, I'm actually a second-generation Burton Hollow resident. For those of you that are familiar with CAS, it resides in Burton Hollow. I'm a CAS graduate, go Cougars in those days, but now Stars. My children both were CAS graduates. Just a couple of things I wanna speak to. After living out of state post-graduation from college, I made a decisive choice to move to Burton Hollow and to CAS specifically, for those reasons. Again, I can take you through the litany of benefits that CAS, those teachers, and that community gave myself and my kids, but I can also speak to a few of the numbers. I sit on the board for the Burton Hollow Civic Association. For the few families that are part of that here, I can tell you in the last year, we've turned over 60 households in the neighborhood. 80% of those have young families. The other 20% are young couples, all with intent to send their kids to CAS. So just some numbers there, that helps make the cause or implore folks. You know, I can speak to the teachers and the staff there. They are amazing. Regardless of what building you put them in, they will continue to be amazing. It's not just about the educators, it's a community at CAS. It is the neighborhood in which it resides, and it is what those neighbors provide those families as well. I chose it, like I said, for a specific reason. I implore you in the board to kindly do the same. It's not just the numbers, it is about the community, it is about that neighborhood. I can assure you, neighbors will leave, they will send their kids to parochial schools. I know nobody wants to talk about that option. As a board member on the Civic Association, I've gotten countless calls and comments and threats and all the things about that. I urge you to consider it. No one in this room would prefer those, so I wanted at least to hear that piece. Hopefully, you get a little flavor for that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Howell. Hello there.
So I just wanted to talk about, like the last meeting I talked about, it's a fact versus emotion decision. So the few facts that I wanted to talk about, facts about closing, or facts to support closing CAS, I don't see any. When you look at the two major reasons for this study, you guys did the enrollment study and the utilization study, okay? The enrollment decline across the district is not happening at the K4 level, it's happening at the high school level. So I don't see how closing an elementary school fixes this problem to the other elements talk about fixing the main problem. The other key fact is, there are more kids per household in the CAS boundary. A quarter more child per household in the CAS boundary than the rest of the district. So again, I don't see how closing the K-4 school in the boundary fixes any problem. We talk about the utilization, okay? The company that we paid taxpayer dollars to run a study said that CAS was the fourth-highest utilized school amongst K4 schools in the district. Fourth-highest. The company that we used tax dollars to do a study on. That's a fact, okay? That's important. That study would be seen at the state level as significant. So I think that's important. And just as a last point, that I've brought this up, like all the meetings I've spoke of, right? The number-one job of an elected official is to represent the people that elected you guys into office. And there's a large, and, right, there's a large ground cell for the community that has continually gone to these meetings saying, "This is a bad idea." And I think that's important when you think about a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Hatley.
Hello. I think I'm not gonna be very well-liked here. I'm a Hall parent, and I was where you all were back when Hall closed. Do we know what year that was?
About 2005.
2006 and '07. My kids, I have one at Churchill, and a 10th grader, and I have one that just graduated. I sat right where you're sitting. And I can tell you, your anxiety level is very high, mine was. I went to all the meetings. It's really about the tools you put in the box. It's not about the box itself. And everybody says, "Well, it's brick and mortar." We see the same teachers we seen at Hall. We seen the same teachers we see at Kennedy and Johnson. They all followed us through. Your kids will be okay. I know you're shaking your heads. I was where you were sitting. I fought it. You know, some of the, I don't know if they were on the board when they were there, when I was there, but we didn't like it. I live eight houses from Hall, okay? It's a vacant lot now, it's a park. My kids rode their bikes down to those schools. Now they have friends from Kennedy's area and other areas. You're gonna be okay, okay? Just either way it goes, okay? But I'm gonna tell you something, the most important thing about this school district is its teachers. If the teachers are good, it makes a ton of difference in the schools, okay? So you go to your teacher conferences, those are the important meetings. See who's in the face of your child, okay? Because I can tell you, that's really what's benefited us. And that's my peace of mind that I came away with. I didn't come here to really talk to this other than the fact to say that you'll be okay. So, that's all I have to say, alright?
Thank you. That is my last blue slip that I have of folks who are wishing to participate in Audience Communications this evening. As we have stated several times over the last many months, I really thank those who have come forward to share their thoughts. Looks like I have one more. Oh, two more, two more. I have two more, okay. I will hold my comments for a moment longer. Our next speaker is Christina Walcred. Am I pronouncing it correctly?
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am a little different from many people in this room. I am not a parent. However, I grew up in Livonia Public Schools. I am a recent graduate of Churchill, and I consider it something very close to my heart. I have a sister who recently moved to this district specifically to send my niece to CAS. And I can tell you, I was a part of that 2006 school district change. My elementary school closed, Washington. It matters. It changes things. I went from a school where I knew everybody. I knew my classmates, I knew my teachers, I knew all the families. And I went to a school where I was alone. And believe me, the children feel it. I felt it. You feel it in your grades, you feel it in your relationships with other kids. It takes a while before you begin to be able to even think about enjoying school again. Please, do not make this decision lightly. It affects the kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Sveck.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for hearing me speak today. I think everyone's done a really good job of, you know, staying the main points that most of us parents feel at CAS. I just wanted to add my voice to that as well. I have two daughters, this is my daughter Sydney, and I also have my daughter Anna sitting over there. Anna is in the Center Program, and Sydney is in Gen Ed. And again, I have similar problems to the parents that you've heard earlier today. I will have to make the choice of either keeping my kids together at one school or separating them and sending them to two different schools. And I just find that very, very difficult. It's a hard decision to make, because I want my daughters to look out for each other, and I want them to be there for each other in school. And again, you know, Anna is in the first grade, you know, she'll switch to a different, I'm sorry, she's in the second grade. She's gonna have to make that switch to another school next year, and then two years later, she's gonna have to make the switch again. And again, having autism is gonna be a very, very difficult switch for her. And I just want you to know that there are many families in the school that are gonna have this problem, and many children who are gonna have to be separated and feel that effect. So I just want you to consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
I believe now I have all of the blue slips of those who would like to participate in Audience Communication. One more. Oh, I apologize, I have one more coming to me. Our next speaker is Ashley Landruth. Thank you.
I have two children at CAS Elementary in the Centers Program. My daughter will be leaving CAS next year anyway. She's a 4th grader, but my son will be there. It will be okay. It'll be hard, there's no one that can replace the people that work at CAS. They've done so much for our family. There's so much more they can do. Closing that school would be devastating. I don't live in the district, I live in Garden City. Either me or my ex-husband drive my children to school and pick them up every day. We were gonna be moving back to Livonia this spring, but if CAS isn't gonna be there, we're not gonna be there either. Open.
Our next speaker is Karen Solomon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be quick. Many people have mentioned new families that have moved in to Livonia because of CAS. I am one of those families. I have two little boys. They switched schools, coming from another school district. We chose CAS. Had I known, I would have moved to the Hoover District, because they have a little boy that suffers from anxiety. Can you imagine? He switched to come to CAS, and then one year later, be confronted or presented with the idea that he has to switch again, and then again to go to Upper Elementary. You can't do this to our children. And I promise you, I know many of my neighbors already, and there are many of them that have little people that are coming up, and they're gonna go to CAS, and they're gonna go proudly. It's a great school, I can't tell you from the district I came from. I was in a grade school's nine. CAS is an eight, and I can tell you, that place is 100% better. Those teachers, Mrs. Reagan, Ms. Pepple, they love. Ms. Pepple knows my name, and I've been there twice. Are you kidding me? They're amazing people. All I beg to do is just think, think of these little people. They're not just children, they're people. My son is sitting there, twiddling his thumbs, biting his nails. Mommy, what's gonna happen to me if they close CAS? What's gonna happen to us? You're gonna be bused to another school again where you don't know anybody, and you're gonna have to readjust once again, and you're gonna have to probably go back on some sort of calming medication again, just to get through it. I didn't expect that when I moved to Livonia. I moved to Livonia because of the city that it is, the community, the sense of family that I feel in Burton Hollow. It's amazing. I have more friends and more community in Burton Hollow, living there for three months than I had in 10 years in my prior community. And now we risk losing all of that, because without that school there, a lot of that community gets pushed elsewhere, and it's not necessary. You don't have to do it. Don't make me wish I would have stayed where I was. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Susio.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have a whole lot to say, other than just sitting back here as a parent who sent two kids through CAS, and then onto Holmes, and then onto Stevenson. First of all, great, great, great education. They couldn't have done better in a public school system, in my opinion. Secondly, we did move specifically, as I said at the last meeting, to CAS, so that we would be in CAS, go to Holmes, go to Stevenson. That's the only reason that we bought in Burton Hollow. Thirdly, sitting here listening- Thirdly, sitting here listening to all these people with the special needs kids, I was blessed. My kids are Gen Ed kids. I didn't have special needs kids, but it breaks my heart to hear about every one of you. And that is a human factor and that means something. That has weight. This is not just numbers. This is not, as people have said, just a building or two buildings that you're thinking about closing. It's people, it's their lives, it's their kids. And we all know as parents, your life is your kids. So, I would challenge each and every one of you to think about that before you really make your vote. Because I know it's easy to listen to facts and figures and we're gonna save this amount of money, but it's more than that. Think about the recent election we had. People were so upset that politicians were not listening to them. Sick of it. It's a similar situation here on a smaller scale. I challenge each and every one of you to think about the human factor behind this. This is not just about money. It's people and their lives and their kids. That's why they're here. That's why they moved into this district. And they will leave if it's not taken care of properly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chrissy Williams.
I'd like to say that CAS sounds wonderful. I think our Garfield fans here were a little shy. But I'd like to say that Garfield has Title I funding. And we use that for support staff for our children who need help getting to where they should be. If we take those kids and we move them, they will get lost. And we can't lose them. Please do not close our school. Thank you.
I believe that all of the speakers who wish to be heard this evening have been heard. As I began a moment ago, this Board of Education wishes to thank those who have been speaking at Audience Communications on this and all other issues over the last many months. It does mean a great deal. There has been an enormous amount of study on all issues that are put before us, but this is one that has had an exceptional amount of study. And the amount of community input is one significant piece of that study. This item will be coming up for a vote further into our meeting this evening. And right now, we're gonna go on to our next item on our agenda. The vote on CAS and Garfield both will be coming up in a little bit. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3E, Response to Prior Audience Communications. I do not have any responses to prior audience communications at this time. The next item on the agenda is Item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the Superintendent. 5A, Meetings of the Regular Meeting of November 14th, 2016. 5B, Minutes of the Special Meeting of November 14th, 2016. 5C, Minutes of the Closed Session of November 14th, 2016. 7A, Bills for Payments December 20th, 2016. 7B, Approval of Resolution for Summer Tax Collection.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Are there questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, seconded by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. May I have the minutes of the closed session, please?
Sorry.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6, Instruction Matters. And 6A is the approval to purchase everyday mathematics student journals. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of everyday math student journals for first through fifth grade classes and sixth grade at Webster for the 2017-18 school year from McGraw-Hill Education for a total cost of $88,785.11, which includes shipping and handling. This total cost includes $21,144.60 and free student journals.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Alice, would you like to address this item for the Board, please?
I would, yes. Thank you very much, President Burton, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll take just a few minutes to summarize the key points that were discussed with the Board during the Committee of the Hall meeting last Tuesday evening, December 13th. As I shared with the Board at that time, we have been using the Everyday Math Program in our school district since 2007. And at the time that we adopted the Everyday Math Program, we made a commitment to purchase the student text, otherwise known as student journals, every year. Because the student texts are consumable, the student journals are consumable, and therefore, they need to be purchased each year. Typically, I bring this recommendation to the Board of Education in the spring of the year for purchase and then use of them the following school year. This year, I am bringing this recommendation to the Board in December because we were contacted by the publishing company McGraw-Hill and were offered a 20% discount if this purchase was made by the end of this month. So, the recommendation we are bringing to you is to purchase our student journals for the Everyday Math Program for the 2017-18 school year this month. It will cost the district $88,785.11, but that does reflect a $21,144 savings to the school district. The funds for this purchase will come from our district's textbook budget. And we do recommend that the Board approve this recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Superintendent or the Board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Business Matters. 7C is the approval of 2016-2017 General Fund Budget Amendment Number 1. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached General Fund Budget Amendment Number 1.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mr. Dixon, would you like to address this for the Board, please?
Yes, I would. Thank you. And happy holidays, everybody. Tonight, we're gonna take a look at the first General Fund Budget Amendment for this fiscal year. And you'll probably see another one sometime in March or April, somewhere along that line. Just to refresh some of the things that we went over on the December 5th meeting, when we had the Finance Committee meeting, when we had on December 5th, okay? We ended last year with a fund balance of about $8.3 million. It was a 5.7%. That's the percentage we were looking at to keep ourselves kind of square with the state. And we got there. You got, or you got there. I wasn't here to get you there, but you got there. This year, when we adopted the budget, we adopted the budget with a $489,000 deficit, alright? Since that time, two major functions have happened. We've lost about 30 kids more than what we had anticipated. And that has caused us to lose some dollars, alright? Probably about $234,000. That's the significant change you'll see in the revenue figure there. And the other part of it is, it really has to do with the various wages and components of things that weren't known at the time that the budget was adopted. That's about $1.8 million. And then there's some $300,000 or so that's spread throughout the budget. So, in relationship to last year, to the original adopted budget, two major changes. One is in the enrollment function. The other one is in the wages and benefits area, okay? And that puts the district at a projected just over $2.8 million deficit. It will bring down the fund balance to about $5,479,000. Slips us under the 5% rule. Now, I do think that at the end of the fiscal year, I believe that those numbers are gonna look a little bit better. And we should be prepared for that. So with that, we recommend approval of the budget as presented.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Superintendent or Board members on the amendment to the budget?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the Wayne County Millage was not included in this budget for this turn. Can you explain to us why?
It wasn't included in this particular budget amendment. I believe that the reasons that we didn't do it is, number one, we weren't sure how the cash was gonna flow, okay? There are payments that are gonna be coming into us as taxes come into us. We wouldn't be sure just exactly when we'd realize the revenue and whether we would realize all of it this fiscal period. And then, just as a precautionary measure, we weren't sure what delinquencies might look like that would cause us to, not necessarily lose revenue, but lose revenue for this fiscal year versus next year. So, the intent was that by the time March flows through, when the next budget amendment comes at us, that we should be in a situation where we've got some history with that and we can project a little bit more accurately.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one more question. Being that we're under the 5%, would that, how does the state classify us as an early warning district? Is it because the year-end from the last budget, from the audit? Is that how they calculate it or they calculate it per term?
No, it's the audited financial statements. And it's one of the variables that they use to determine whether you're in early warning legislation at risk. It's whatever term you wanna put on that, whatever term they wanna put on it. There are some other variables to it too. But it's the audited financial statements. And I think that on June 30th of this year, you'll still be okay at that 5%. And I would suggest to you that you're probably not on their radar screen. This district probably is not on their radar screen.
Okay.
At this point in time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry to drop this on you. And I'm not sure if you have the answer. And if not, if you can let me know. At what point are we turned, will we be turned over to an emergency manager? At what point does the state start turning us over to an emergency manager when our fund balance runs too low?
Okay, first of all, you need to run a deficit. And a deficit, in their terms, is not just a fiscal year deficit. It's the complete loss of your fund balance, where your fund balance becomes negative. So, that's one of the variables. Then they usually, not usually, they'll give you two or three years to get out of deficit. They'll require you to write a deficit elimination plan. That plan is submitted to the Department of Education. They'll either approve it or disapprove it, but you'll play volleyball with them to get the plan back to where they want it to be. And on a monthly basis, they'll monitor that plan because you'll report back to them your progress on it, alright? If at the end of that three-year period of time, you are not out of deficit and for whatever reason, they don't believe you're gonna get out of deficit, there's a series of activities that'll start. It would probably be five years down the road before you might see an emergency manager after you got into deficit. Although I will tell you that the Department of Treasury, now that they're involved with it, is, nobody's out five years with Treasury yet, so they don't know what they're gonna do, but that could creep up on you. But I think you've got at least three good years to get, after your fund balance is completely depleted, to get square with the Department of Education. And once you get square with them, you'd be back out of deficit. If you don't, you continue down, you continue with deficits, is when they'll approach you with the emergency manager. And there are some other options besides the emergency manager. I don't wanna get into that right now, but.
Okay.
So, it's down the road.
Okay. And then, with the fund balance at, say, right around $5 million, how many days' worth of operating dollars do we have?
School days?
Yes. I believe that, Mrs. Oakwood, did you provide us with that information?
Yeah.
About three weeks of operating expenses?
We have about three weeks' worth of operating expenses.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the Board or Superintendent? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. Mr. Dixon. Yes. Just recently, in the last couple of weeks, we dodged a bullet at the state level. And the MIPSers, the legislation did not go through, correct?
That's correct.
If that had gone through, what would that have cost us?
I believe that zeroed out the Wayne Risa Enhancement Millage and probably cost you a few dollars more or less, depending on what the five years really turned out to be. So, it would've cost you somewhere over a five-year period, right around $37 million.
And my understanding is that legislation is not dead.
That's correct.
In other words, that's gonna come back to the legislature in January or February, is it not?
It's dead in the lame duck. The rumor mill is that it is coming back in January. I mean, it hasn't been introduced yet because it's not January, but that's the rumor.
Okay.
The other, I mean, if you wanna talk about potential downfalls here, I think one of the things that is even scarier than the pension-related issues is the income tax switch that they're thinking about going to. Net income versus gross on the income tax goes into the school aid fund. That's, I think it's just under $470 million.
That's the number that I heard.
Yeah. And that would be some $300 a kid.
That would be a cut of about $300 per student in our, in our.
Yes.
School aid fund, our foundation allowance.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from other Board members or the Superintendent? No, already. Seeing none, Mr. Dixon, thank you so much for your update. I appreciate that. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7D, Approval of Lease Garfield Cooperative Preschool. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached lease agreement with the Garfield Cooperative Preschool, effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, for a total amount of $9,821.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Francis, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to point out again that we are bringing forward the recommendation to approve this lease. It is a lease renewal for the Garfield Cooperative Preschool. They've been leasing space at Marshall School. And this is a one-year, July 1 of 16 to June 30 of 2017 lease. So again, we do recommend the renewal of this lease.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Superintendent or Board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7E, Approval of Lease Get Skills Basketball. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached lease agreement to Get Skills Basketball, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, for a. through June 30, 2017, for a total amount of $37,257.
Support.
That, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
And, Mr. Francis, can you please address this?
Absolutely. Once again, this is a lease renewal, which will bring additional revenue into Livonia Public Schools for the Get Skills Basketball group. And they've been leasing space at Dickinson Center. Again, we recommend the renewal of this lease for the Get Skills Basketball. Again, July 1 of 16 to June 30 of 17.
Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board? And, Mr. Francis, I assume that there's nothing substantially different, other than the dates of
Correct.
Because this has been a long-term tenant of ours.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 7F, Approval of Lease Under the Rainbow Preschool. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached lease agreement with Under the Rainbow, effective July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, for a total amount of $25,687.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mr. Francis, you're back up again.
Hate to sound like a broken record, but we do recommend the renewal of this lease. Again, it is a lease renewal for Under the Rainbow Preschool. They have been leasing space at Kennedy Elementary. Again, this would bring revenue into Livonia Public Schools. There is no substantial change, again, from July 1 of 16 to June 30 of 17.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments by the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 7G, Approval of Lease Journey Church Detroit. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached lease agreement with Journey Church Detroit, effective January 1, 2017, through June 30, 2017, for a total amount of $19,448.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Francis, you address this one, please.
I am excited to say something different.
[laughing]
This is actually a new lease. The Journey Church has been using, through our community ed room use program, the Emerson Middle School area for their services. And since February earlier this year, they've been a good renter, and they actually are very pleased with Livonia Public Schools. So, they approached wanting to lock in with a lease to remain here. Their group is growing, and they wanted to make sure that they had a place. Being in the middle of the year, we usually have our leases, as you know, from July 1 to June 30. But based on the timing, it worked out well, and both sides were agreeable to do a six-month lease. So, this one is actually January 1 of 17 to June 30 of 17, so we could lock in a rate with that group. So, we, again, are recommending approval of this new six-month lease. And then, presumably, if things continue to go as well as they have been, I'll be bringing you a renewal for a full year on this one.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board or the superintendent? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry. Nope. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 7H, Approval of Bid Results for Bus Purchase 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District
approve the purchase of 13 mini buses, A-2, from Midwest Transit Equipment, Marshall, Michigan, for the cost of $644,072, and eight 77-passenger long-body conventional buses, plus three 72-passenger conventional special needs buses from the Holland Bus Company, Holland, Michigan, for a cost of $985,059. The combined total of this proposed purchase for 21 buses is $1,629.
Twenty-four.
Actually, 24 buses.
What did I say?
Twenty-one. It's twenty-four.
Twenty-nine, 24 buses for $1,629,131.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis?
Yes, thank you. This is a planned purchase out of the 2013 bond for updating of our Transportation Department fleet. This is the, these 24 is the last planned purchase out of, that we had originated on out of that. The source, like I had mentioned, is the 2013 bond fund. You'll notice that we have actually split this one, as we discussed last week together, between the Midwest Transit Equipment Company and the Holland Bus Company. They had bid. It was actually more advantageous for the district, and gave us a little bit of a savings to get some of the buses from the Holland Bus Company and the others from the Midwest Transit. So, we bring forward to, for your approval, this bid.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Francis, do you know what the average age of the buses that we're replacing? You, oh...
Average? Mean or median?
I, just kind of an idea about...
No, this actually, we did have a list, and I can get it for you, because I did get it from Mr. Lau not too long ago, to discuss with Mrs. Oakwest. So, it is actually bringing our fleet much more up to date. We'll be getting rid of, with these 24 2017s, we'll be bringing those in and removing a group from '02, '03, '04. So, a good number of older from their early aughts would be leaving the fleet, and we would be bringing in the new buses.
Okay.
And I would put it up more on par with, we have many more 15s, 16s, and 17s now, based upon these recent purchases.
Sure. But this is our third and final purchase of buses, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board or the superintendent? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is item 7I, Approval of Contract Amendment, NTH Consultants. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Livonia Public Schools School District Board of Education, based upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the contract amendment with NTH Consultants Limited, Norphil, Michigan, to repave parking lots at Randolph Elementary School, Hoover Elementary School, Grant Elementary School, Holmes Middle School, and Franklin High School, as well as the water main replacement at Holmes Middle School, for a total cost of $150,000. Also move that upon receipt of the contract amendment, the superintendent is authorized to sign said contract on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Francis, would you address this one?
Yes. NTH Consultants has been working with Livonia Public Schools for quite some time. We have a current contract with them for materials testing services for the bond projects. This amendment was put forth, or is being put forth, towards the current contract. And this will allow for NTH to perform the sinking fund projects, which is the paving projects that will be happening in the summer of 17. We're coming to the buildings that were recently renovated. With the large machinery that comes onto those properties during renovation, it beats up the parking lots pretty well. So, we are going to, out of the sinking fund, do whatever work is necessary, based upon the conditions that those parking lots are left in, to repave at the buildings that you mentioned, which you may recognize as recently renovated. One other item that we have from the sinking fund, the NTH is also going to work with us on, if the board votes to amend their current contract, is the water main at Holmes Middle School. It's in need of repair, and we want to work on that as well.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
No. I'm sorry, yes.
[laughing]
You're doing an Eileen.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes.
Someone will.
Mrs., President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Before our next motion, because I do believe that this is where most of you folks came to listen tonight. We haven't seen your faces for the last many, many years. So, I believe most of you are here for this next item. I do like to mention that the function of making a motion and seconding a motion does not indicate support of that motion, or lack of support of that motion. It is a requirement of Robert's rules, that we make a motion and someone seconds it in order for us to put it on the table for discussion. And that is the only purpose of making a motion and seconding a motion. I just want to make that clear for folks. The next item on our agenda is item 7J, Approval to Close CAS and Garfield Elementary Schools. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the closing of two elementary schools, and authorize the superintendent to take all steps necessary to implement and reorg, this reorganization effort with the 2017-2018 school year. Garfield Elementary School students will attend Randolph and Kennedy. CAS Elementary Schools general education students will attend Buchanan and Hoover. CAS center students will attend Randolph, and Buchanan center students will attend Grant.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Oakwest, would you address this item for us, please?
Thank you, President Burton. As you know, over the past couple of months, we've presented multiple times in depth on this topic. And so, I know you've asked that I just give a brief overview of the steps that have brought us here today. So, about one year ago, right around the same week, I believe, the last board meeting in December, a recommendation was made for the board to commission two significant studies to be completed by an expert group, Plant Moran Cressa. One was an in-depth enrollment analysis and projection study, and the other was a complete building and facility utilization study. Those were completed concurrently by Plant Moran Cressa from about January of 2016 until about March of 2016. Then, as the board may recall, in April, Plant Moran brought that data, a significant amount of data, brought that to the Board of Education, and shared a summary of that with us. From that point, we brought together a district committee that was formed, really representing every school, stakeholder group, pre-K, post-secondary. So, we had folks, parents, staff members, administrators, et cetera, really working on, with some clear objectives and parameters of in-depth study that we had asked them to take a look at. You know, it was really clear after the first couple of months, that although we had thought we may be able to bring recommendations forth in June, we really found we needed some additional time to take a look at each of the factors involved, you know, in this important decision. So, the committee, really, I'd like to commend the committee for their really thoughtful and careful work, their in-depth study. The desire was to have a recommendation that would not only serve the district today and tomorrow, but a long-term plan as we move forward with these significant investments in our schools. The focus has really been on providing a plan that would allow our district to move forward on a stable and successful path for the students we serve, the staff that we value, and our community. So, with that, I just turn it back over to the board for your discussion.
Thank you. As we stated at the beginning of our meeting, this is certainly one topic that has had many, many months of discussion amongst community, amongst the committee that was charged with studying the data and bringing forth recommendations, and now several meetings of discussion amongst board members. At this time, I would like to follow the same procedure that we have in some of our community forums, and many of you were present in those forums, where we are going to basically go down our table and ask for comments from our board members. I'd like to hear from each one of our board members before we open it up for further discussion amongst our board, should there be any back and forth, so that each member of the board has an opportunity to speak to this item. After all, comments are concluded, we will take a vote at that time. Mr. Johnson, I'd like to start at your end of the table, and we will just work our way down the table and hear from each member of the board.
Thank you, President Burton. First of all, I want to thank all the committee members, all the community members as well that came to the forums. We've had a lot of input. I appreciate you all taking the time to become involved. You're all very passionate about this issue. I can assure you that we have received a lot of email. I have read each and every email that I have received. I've listened to the comments, and I've considered all your input. I want to thank Paul Wills from Plant Moran Cressa, who spent many, many hours putting all of the information together. These are the experts in the area. He spent countless hours. I want to thank the committee. It was interesting, because I was a member of that committee. And to listen from week to week, and from meeting to meeting, to listen to the input that came from the committee, and Mr. Wills then took that information in the next meeting, you could tell that it was all incorporated into the next discussion that we had. He moderated the committee. He was there, and each, every one of them, and spent a lot of time. I also want to thank Mr. Archibald and Dr. Terrell, as well as Mrs. Oakwest, for the countless hours that they've put in, in behind-the-scenes, putting the data together, and being able to present it to us in a reasonable fashion. A decision like this is always difficult, when you're going to consider closing a school. It's emotional for the families involved, and it's never an easy task. Quite honestly, it's the most difficult decision I've had to make, sitting behind this desk for the last six and a half years. Fortunately, that's part of the job. And if we didn't want to make the tough decisions, we shouldn't be sitting up here. I think each one of us understands that. But as I said last week, we have to separate the facts from the emotions. The facts are that we're down 1,500 students from where we were when we started the bond back in 2013. Yet, we're operating the same number of buildings that we operated when we had almost 18,000 students. Overall, our buildings are underutilized. You can't continue to operate the same number of buildings when your student population is dwindling. We just can't continue to do that going forward, and we need to make a correction. As Mrs. Oakwest indicated, this all started from a very simple question that was posed a year ago. And that is, given where we are in our plan, essentially, our far-view plan to implement the bond, are we spending the money reasonably, responsibly? Do we need to look at how we're going forward? That's why we commissioned the studies to be done that involve Plant Moran Cressa. The board has to be mindful of our responsibility, not only to the CAS parents and students, but we have almost 15,000 students that this board is responsible for. And we have to take into consideration all of those students. Over the last 10 years, we've cut $42 million out of our budget. During that time, we haven't cut one single program. I think that's being fiscally responsible. We've done it in very difficult ways. Yet, we continue on an annual basis, as you saw tonight, to look at budget amendments. tonight, to look at budget amendments. We dodged a bullet not long ago that would have cost us about $37 million. Yes, we have the enhancement millage, but that would have been eaten up by what we would have had to pay if that legislation had passed. That legislation is coming back around the corner. We have to be ready for it. Will this cover all of it? Probably not, but we still have to be ready for it. We have to decide tonight what's best for the long-term stability of the district as a whole, and I understand CAS is part of that. But our responsibility is to all the students. We have to be proactive. We can't be reactive. We can't sit back and do nothing and wait for perhaps another shoe to fall. As I said last week, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen down the road, but I know what's happened in the past is a pretty good indicator of what's going to happen in the future. We certainly don't expect to see any immediate help coming from the state of Michigan, so we're sort of left on our own. We have to do it whatever way we can. It's been a difficult process and certainly a difficult decision. I spent a lot of time, I flip-flopped back and forth on how I was going to vote, but looking at the numbers, looking at the responsibility as to all students, I will be supporting this motion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, President Burton. This is tough, and I'm sure you're all aware of what we're going through with this. Mr. Johnson said it all. Like he said, I want to thank the committee for their hard work, our chairs, everyone that was involved, and especially the community. We appreciate your input, and we've taken it very seriously, all your written comments and your spoken comments. We tried to listen with a very open mind. I totally understand the emotion for the CAS and the Garfield parents. Being a CAS parent and now being a CAS grandmother is difficult. It plays on our mind day after day, and some of us have had sleepless nights. Like Mr. Johnson, I wavered back and forth, but in the end, there are so many financial issues that are up in the air that may affect us, and we, one of our responsibilities is to have a balanced budget. And I don't know, like Mr. Johnson said, we don't have a crystal ball. Are we going to be able to do that? If we aren't, my first priority then is to keep programs, and the community has told us that. They want us to keep programs. We have excellent programs with excellent staff running that. They told us that we should engage in schools of choice, we should establish pay-to-play, we should sell land, and we should close schools. So I will be also supporting this motion.
Thank you.
Plant Moran has done an extensive and thorough review regarding both the district's projected student population and facilities utilization. These numbers have been challenged, reviewed, and tested, and remain true under intense scrutiny. Plant Moran is only one of four certified demographers by the state of Michigan and has a proven track record of accuracy. We, as a board, requested that the district spend time and money to obtain the most reliable and accurate information available. Plant Moran has provided us with overwhelming data that we can easily close two elementary buildings using the district-provided parameters, keep the triads intact, keep the existing boundary lines, keep the current grade configuration, do not increase class sizes, and preserve rooms such as for specials such as music and art. Were we to eliminate those parameters, we could easily close a minimum of four buildings. What purpose would it serve to seek an expert opinion only to turn around and disregard that information simply because we don't like the answers that they are giving us? We have a committee of over 40 stakeholders that were assembled to research and provide possible resolutions to current district issues. Questions like, is it prudent to renovate all of our K-4 buildings? Are we adequately utilizing our facilities? By freeing up bond dollars, sinking fund dollars, and operational dollars, can we better serve the educational needs of our entire student population? An overwhelming majority of the committee has recommended that we move forward with the current proposal. We have a group of more than 40 stakeholders who have all spent a minimum of 50 hours each reviewing this information. At the very minimum, the community has spent, this committee has spent over 2,000 hours reviewing and questioning the tasks before them. That equates to one person working a full-time job of 40 hours per week for an entire year. The committee includes informed, caring, and committed community members. They have spent a great amount of time and effort to peel back the layers of information provided to them. They relentlessly conferred and consulted on what would be the best course of action. And personally, I am not inclined to ignore what their voices have to say. I believe that the committee members' voices have as much to impact on my decision as the community members that have come before us. The board is tasked with overseeing the district as a whole. We are asked to make tough decisions about many, many different issues. Not one of us sitting at this table is an expert, and even a small percentage of the decisions set before us. Why was the community assembled if we seek only to utilize the information that fits into our own personal box? As a board, we must rely on a great deal of information provided to us. We sought out the counsel of this group of individuals. We've asked questions, provided additional information and concerns, and have asked them to go back and reevaluate their recommendation. The third group of individuals that I have chosen that have given us a great deal of information is our district administration and staff. They have spent their time making sure that everyone's child receives the same educational opportunities no matter what building they walk into. I would not expect to see any one of them walking into my office and start telling me that I'm doing my job wrong. I don't think that any of them would walk into your home to disagree with you on your parenting skills. Yet here we sit in that very position, second-guessing the decisions. Excuse me. I do again request that all members of this room refrain from comments while we have a speaker speaking. Every individual in this room deserves the right to be heard. Excuse me. I respectfully request that everyone listen to all the speakers who are speaking this evening. Thank you. Yet here we sit in that very position, second-guessing the decisions that they make, disregarding the information they provide to us to best run the district. Personally, I respect these people. I am astonished each and every day at the dedication and personal sacrifices they make to ensure that the students and families within our district all receive the best services that we are fiscally able to provide. Every child in every building counts. Every student in every building is afforded the same educational experience in Livonia Public Schools. Every staff member is held to the same standard at any other staff member in any of our buildings. I am shocked and disappointed that our community would accuse any one of our employees of providing a substandard education or opportunity to any one of our students simply based on their location. Excuse me. I respectfully request, I respectfully request that everybody give all respect to every speaker, please. Every-
And get to the point. Don't lecture us.
I'm-
Respect is earned.
I'm respectfully requesting that each of the individuals in this room listen to every speaker, please. Is Livonia somehow segregated by elementary schools? Only certain children are worthy of the perceived top-notch education? That my children are second-class citizens because, or that I'm a bad parent because I allowed my children to attend Hoover Elementary? Knowing the truth now, should we be labeling our restrooms and drinking fountains? Should we send our kids to the five, six schools in colored shirts so that we know what elementary school that they came from so that they're worthy of being taught? I am respectfully requesting that all members of this room listen to all opinions of each individual, please. Thank you. Comments have been made that we should not be closing schools unless the district is losing money. Is that what our community is asking us to do? Keep everything status quo until we put the district in a deficit situation? Would we prefer to wait until an emergency manager comes to tell us what to do and what buildings to close? Making these types of tough decisions is exactly why the district is not losing money. We are legally bound to be a balanced budget, and we have no choice but to cut some, to cut and cut some more to make that happen. I will vote to preserve public education and the rights of all of our children in the district to be able to obtain a free and equal education.
Mr. Centers?
Well, the prospect of closing schools is very upsetting. I mentioned this in the community forum, that no one runs for school board because they want to close elementary schools. It's one of the toughest things the administration, the parents, the kids can go through. As parents, you have one job, and that's to advocate for what you feel is best for your individual child. I thank you for doing that. However, as a member of the Board of Education, I need to think beyond this, to the entire school district. Parents do not and should not have to worry about bond ratings, millage rates, making payroll. It's in looking at the whole district that I intend to vote yes. Not because I want to leave here making everyone upset, it's because I can't convince myself that leaving buildings is the best thing for the long-term health of our district and therefore the education of our students.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. I too would like to thank the committee and all its members for all their hard work, and Paul Willis from Plant Moran Cressa. We do not know what will become of Livonia Public Schools in the next five or 10 years. We do not know how many students we will have. Communities change, and we can outsell ourselves short by closing, not maintaining, or disposing buildings and properties. Neighborhoods turn over, and we need to keep CAS and Garfield open in order to preserve our future. Please, 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 let me speak, and please be respectful of everybody here, please. Closing these buildings would be placing a huge burden on future boards and our community with a possible millage for new buildings with an existing 30-year, $195 million bond already in place that will not expire into 2043. Our district did not take a step back before we began the process for renovations. This is our true enrollment concerns. The Board of Education assumed that we were okay. We let the prior administration take the lead. The board assumed everything was fine, including me, but it wasn't, and our special education students are now the ones who will fill the gaps, and they shouldn't be. CAS elementary enrollment numbers have been the same since the bond study implementation, which included special education center programs. Garfield's number have had a loss, but not as large as Randolph Elementary, which was renovated this past summer. CAS and Buchanan students and the Garfield Title I students need the Board of Education's backing. We cannot let them fail. These are our district's most vulnerable students. We need to protect them. Our district was right-sized in 2006 with the Legacy Initiative. We lost 1,100 students the two years following the closing of our seven elementary schools. Review the state of Michigan SEPI website, and you will note that Caton, West Bloomfield, Wald Lake Schools did not show enrollment losses like LPS did during that time period. Student losses from closures are real and a real possibility with this action, too. With this proposal, Livonia Public Schools is targeted to save $400,000 for the general fund per building in general fund dollars. Do we take the chance to lose more students than we already have? What about the good faith efforts of the voters in the CAS and Garfield neighborhoods who supported the bond? They voted to have their buildings improved, and truly, if they had any idea that this was on the table, that they would have voted the bond down, especially since it nearly passed by 600 votes. Please. The proposal tonight will affect 122 Center Program children from CAS and Buchanan, along with 200 adult special education students from the Western Wade Skill Center. We closed Perrinville in 2015, which impacted 251 special education students. What message does that give our community? And I too, with my daughter, was part of the transition with the Legacy Initiative. And when we left Taylor Elementary, we were given ornaments that said, "Great kids are tailor-made because of you." And every year, I put that ornament up on my tree, just as a reminder that great kids are tailor-made because of me. However, not all children have the same opportunities that I gave my daughter. Not all children are born with the opportunity to have a wonderful life and a wonderful education. And I'm truly taking that into account in my decision tonight not to support this initiative.
Thank you. So much. Please, please. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. Desperate times call for desperate measures. The committee would agree, but it's hard to imagine other ways of felling small trees if you've always swung an axe. We are not in despair yet. If we are in despair, the less-than-1% savings would not be enough to get us out of it. We could capitulate. We could give in and say that this is the best we'll ever be, and that it's all downhill from here. The thing is, I don't believe that. We have amazing teachers. Some of them are here tonight. Teachers who have worked miracles with our kids. Teachers that are dedicated beyond description. We have the best superintendent in Metro Detroit, possibly in the entire state. We have Stacy Jenkins, who for the last five years has been working to promote this district in ways that had never been happening before, and those are showing great fruit, yielding new students. I have faith in these people. They have plans to grow this district, plans which are well-thought-out and meaningful, and which I'd like to see implemented. My colleagues have suggested that our primary purpose is to build a budget. I would remind them that our primary purpose is to build a vision. The budget falls under that vision, and it should be a vision of growth. Growth is slow. It deserves time. Even the state has a 10-year growth plan for their 10-in-10. We need to carefully monitor enrollment. The trends show we have leveled off and started moving up. This should be encouraged. We have a great benchmark in the study that the committee spent so much time on. Their in-depth notion, their in-depth work on studying this data has provided us with a tool that we can use moving forward. It's not a tool that's confined only to today. That data is ours, and it's not going anywhere. Our community will be undergoing a demographic shift over the next 10 years and even onward with profound impact. As seniors leave, we need to open the doors to younger families. These represent our future enrollment. We have been told by our community that we need to keep our programs, to not cut our programs. I would say not only keep them, but add to them. Our utilization represents space usage. Our numbers are low because our space is not being used well. We need to not consider that as a liability, but as an asset. It's a place for us to develop new programs. Empty rooms should be filled, not closed. Now, we were told that the recommended level for utilization is 80%, but- utilization is 80%, but that's only a number used to determine whether to give us a grant for, or a bond that we've already got. So that number really is meaningless for us at this point. Yes, we've dodged a bullet. In one of my emails, a community member said that was more like a bomb, and I think that's a great analogy. Dodging bombs is dangerous business. It doesn't alleviate these bombs if we close the buildings. The bombs are bigger than we are. If we were to close the building and these bombs showed up, we'd still be devastated. We also need to harness our community's passion and advocacy efforts, and I'm talking to you. You're here tonight. I want your voice in Lansing. Will you please go home and send an email to the governor? Would you please go home and contact our senators and representatives? They have more to say about this issue than we do. Please, you are already learning how to be an advocate. The next step is easy. This was the hard one. The way I see it, we have two choices. We can close the schools or we can leave the schools open. Looking at it towards the future, if we close the school and things continue to improve, then we've limited our growth and given up on our future. If we close the schools and things decline, then what? We've already played our trump card. If we leave the schools open and we grow, we've won the prize. If we leave the schools open and things don't improve, we can revisit this option with the data that we already have. We'll be wiser and we can use that more effectively. With this consideration, I cannot support this resolution, or this, uh, recommendation.
As it was said, about a year ago, this board asked for data. Uh, we wanted to make wise, data-driven decisions to make certain that if we spend about $3 million to renovate any building, that that building would not need to be closed within the next five to 10 years. Because if we did, that would be a horrific waste of taxpayer money. We were in agreement at the time that that would be wasteful. And we needed to make sure that if we spend money, it's going to be spent wisely. The members of our community spend a great deal of money on our elementary schools, our middle schools, our high schools, our preschools, our post-secondary. And it's, the Board of Education's charged to oversee, to make sure that that money is spent well. We take that very, very seriously. Unfortunately, just like in a household budget, there are a lot of different ways to spend that money. And we can't spend the same pot twice. We've received, uh, as has been stated, comments from many, many members of the community. Most of the folks who are here present tonight are opposed to this resolution. I have to say, we've also received a whole lot of emails to folks saying, "Please look at the whole district. Please do whatever is necessary to preserve our programs for our kids in all of the district." And all of the district includes Cass and Garfield. It's been asked that we take a look at the root problem, and that is a very valid concern. And this Board of Education, this community, has been working toward the root problem for many, many years. The root problem is lack of proper funding for, for public education in the state of Michigan. That's a reality that we have to face every day. As this Board of Education comes in each week to do our work, we have to work with a certain set amount of money that is dictated to us by the state of Michigan, over which we don't have control. It's our job to make sure we spend it for the best benefit of our students possible. That's a task that lately has kept most of us awake at night. I'm not kidding you when it's, it's been said at this table and it's very true. Most of us have not been sleeping. Most of us have been, have been quite stressed about this decision for several months now because we take it very, very seriously. I understand completely how it feels to be on both sides of this table. Because my kids went to Marshall Elementary School before the Legacy Initiative and it closed. And we advocated for it to stay open. And we advocated that it would stay open, at the time, uh, we advocated that it would stay open for at least one more year to see what would happen with the demographics and with the economy. And we were granted the one more year. And unfortunately, what happened with that following year was the beginning of, of the downward roller coaster ride of finances in Michigan. My kids went through the Marshall closure and moved to Cass. I'm a Cass parent. Um, a couple of years later, my kids went through the Legacy Initiative and reorganized yet again. So I totally understand what it feels like to be on both sides of this table. And they both stink. It's awful to be on either side of this table. It's awful that we have to be discussing this. But when the state of Michigan does something like happened four or five years ago of cutting $470 per child in the middle of a school year, that puts local school districts into horrific budget situations. What that equates to, because 470 doesn't sound like a big number. What that means is in the middle of a school year, $5 million was taken out from us. And this kind of activity has happened over and over and over again over the last several years. And every time we come back saying, "We are going to try hard to take the cuts and keep those cuts out of the classroom." Because we want to keep those cuts away from our children as much as humanly possible. We are trying to keep programs in place. We're trying to keep class sizes reasonable. We're trying to keep services for our kids. The services for our children, the programs for our children that affect all of our children in every level are our responsibility as a Board of Education and are important to every person in this, in, who's had kids who go through the schools. This decision has been exceptionally difficult. I agree with several on this board who have said that this is the most difficult decision that I have ever been faced with on the Board of Education. And it's because we really, truly do care deeply about our community, about our schools. Livonia Public Schools and Livonia as a community values our neighborhood schools. That's one important piece of this puzzle that can't be measured with data, but it's very real. And we can't ignore that. The difficulty that especially our special education population will have if a school is closed and they need to move, that is very real. And yet it can't be measured with data, but it can't be ignored by our Board of Education. And I assure you that it's not being ignored. I have swayed back and forth on this decision also. I've never felt good about either way I'm going with it. Like everyone else who's charged with making this decision, I've spent an inordinate amount of time studying it to try to make sure I'm doing the right thing. And what I've kind of come down to, like a few other decisions that have been extremely difficult, I don't believe there is a right or a wrong thing to do with this situation. Because either way, there are pros and cons for our students and for our community and for our neighbors surrounding a building. I don't think there's a right or a wrong thing to do. I think there's just doing your best with a tough situation and a tough question before us. What, what really is coming down to this decision for me is that aside from the bond money, which will be spent regardless, in these five years, it will be spent in the best way possible on these students for the items that are outlined in the bond. If you're not aware, not all of the items that were needed in our district are covered under the bond. There are many items such as furniture where we couldn't afford 100%, even with our bond. So we are planning on replacing 75% of our furniture. Some of our mechanical equipment, we can't afford to replace all of it. So we're replacing as much of it as we can. We're replacing 70 to 80% of it. That means some are going to do, get it and some are going to not. The, but the bond money that would follow any of these schools, that will be allocated to any of these schools, will increase the percentage of those items that we couldn't afford to pay for before. So more students will have the better, newer furniture. So more of our, uh, technological equipment will come into every classroom. That's what happens with the bond money. The general operations money is different. The $800,000 per year, which is a conservative number, which is taking into account the need for special supports into any buildings if this measure passes. The $800,000 per year could either go to keeping Garfield and Cass open, which are important things to do. These are valued buildings. These are valued schools. We could spend the $800,000 to keep both of those buildings open. Or we could spend the $800,000 to do things such as putting kindergarten parapros back in our kindergarten classrooms again. Putting learning specialists back in our first and second grade again that have got, that have had to be cut. Replacing textbooks that are way too far overdue. Some of our textbooks are 12 to 16 years old. That's way too old. When it comes down to it for me, I can only spend that $800,000 pot in one way and not both. And they're both worthy. I'm going to have to err on the side of putting more programs and more benefits for our students in front of them in the form of supports in their classrooms. Added programs that parents are asking for and that they're, and that they deserve. If we expect third grade reading to come up as the state has asked for, and it says we've always known needs to, then we have to supply additional assistance for our early learners. These are things that we can do a better job of if we have that money on an annual basis. And these are things that will benefit not only other kids in the district, but Cass kids, too. This is, again, the hardest decision I've ever had to make as a board member, but I'm going to support the closure of the two buildings so that I can put that money inside the classrooms for those kids in buildings where they will then reside. Mrs. Oquist, you have not had an opportunity to speak. Are there any issues you would like to address or any questions or comments you'd like to make?
No, President Burton. I shared it at the beginning and certainly we've, we've shared throughout the process, some of the most significant considerations. You know, as you've shared, um, these decisions are extraordinarily difficult for a Board of Education, for an administration. Um, and I believe that, that many of the points that we've covered over the past number of months have continued to be shared here this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, each board member has been given the opportunity to share their thoughts. Are there any other thoughts on this item, uh, before we vote on this item?
President Burton, I, I do have a-
Mrs. McDonald.
I do have a question. Um, Mrs. Oquist, um, I know at one point we were talking about the visual, visually impaired students staying at Kennedy. Is that still in place?
Thank you, Trustee McDonald. Um, we had had a request from, um, the staff at Kennedy Elementary, um, to have the visually impaired program, which services at this time six students remaining at Kennedy. Um, there is available space there. And that's one of the things that we've certainly said we would infer with our, our school administration and our district administration. And if they were desirous of keeping that program there, um, that we would certainly facilitate that happening.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from board members? Seeing them, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
No.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I've, the next, excuse me, the, the next item on our agenda this evening is item 7K, approval to close Western Wayne Skill Center and relocate programs. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the closing of the Western Wayne Skill Center and authorized the superintendent to take all steps necessary to implement the relocation of all programs contained within. The superintendent will bring back for the board's approval by March 2017, the final recommendation for a new location for the Western Wayne Skill Center.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oquist, could you address this item for us, please?
Thank you again, President Burton. For this recommendation-
I'm, I'm sorry, could I, could I interrupt you for just a moment?
Of course.
Uh, folks in the room, you are certainly welcome to stay. You are welcome to go whichever you prefer. If you do choose to stay, could you please keep a conversation, uh, so that we can, uh, take conversation into the hallway so that we can hear the speakers who are addressing the rest of our business? There are other important items on our agenda this evening that we need to hear, be able to hear with. Thank you. Mrs. Oquist, I apologize for the interruption. Please go ahead.
Not at all, President Burton. Uh, for this recommendation, we are looking to, um, find a more optimal facility and home for the programs located at the Western Wayne Skill Center. The Western Wayne Skill Center primarily, um, is utilized to meet the needs of our special education young adults aged 18 to 26. Um, Western Wayne Skill Center also houses our adult education, uh, classes and the staff for our shared time program. There has been a significant amount of support, um, and strong support for relocating the programs contained within. Um, as we've shared, um, and I'll share just briefly, um, it is our only two-story facility, our two-story school, um, in the district. It is need, in need of significant repair and renovation. Um, as has been shared by, um, staff and leadership, not only in student services, um, but at the Western Wayne Skill Center, because of the needs of our students, both, um, some physical needs and cognitive, uh, needs, it is very difficult to have our students in that current setting. Um, the current dollars allocated, uh, for the Western Wayne Skill Center would not suffice to make the renovations necessary. Um, and so therefore we would be, um, asking our Department of Student Services to work with the stakeholders at the Western Wayne Skill Center to determine the best new location, should the vote, um, this evening by the Board of Education choose to relocate those programs. Our intent would be to bring a recommendation to you of a new location to the board, no later than March of 2017. We've certainly shared, um, some of the possible locations, um, although a piece of that was dependent upon other items which were considered here, uh, this evening. Certainly, we have had, um, and I, I know you have received, we also had some, uh, feedback at the forums with regard to concerns, um, about some of the potential locations. So those are all things that I know our Director of Student Services and members of, um, the Western Wayne Skill Center staff and parents would be taking a look at to see. Again, um, we have a lot of unique programming there, um, and therefore we'd like to take a little bit more time with regard to determining the new location, but would like to recommend moving forward with the relocation of programs. This was another element studied by, um, the, the, the committee that has been doing this work over the past number of months.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on this? Um, I think what I've, what I'd like to do is, is, uh, as this is another very, very important, very sensitive item for our community, I would like to go down our table as we have in a similar manner to all other items related to our, uh, facility enrollment study and ask each board member if they would like to share their thoughts before we open it up for further discussion amongst ourselves. Uh, Mr. Johnson, if I may begin with you, Ian.
Thank you, President Burton. Um, this was also, uh, part of the, uh, committee, uh, consideration. Uh, there was a lot of information, um, numerous individuals from the, uh, the Skill Center itself, uh, came in and provided us with feedback. Um, and it, it certainly seems to me that, uh, the, the configuration of that building really isn't conducive to, uh, the student population that's there. Um, I think they should be spread out, uh, not on a single floor. I think there are a number of issues, um, that are involved. Um, I'd certainly like to see it, uh, the- I'd certainly like to see it, the program itself moved. Hopefully, we can find a suitable location for it where it would be best for the students, the staff, and everyone involved.
Thank you. Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. It's tough following Mr. Johnson. He expresses all my thoughts.
We link so closely.
Yes, yes. We must have phoned each other, right? I also agree that because of the committee's work and their recommendation, that the school should be closed and, for the students, give them a more conducive area.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield?
I agree. I think a better analogy or description is we're not closing the program, we're closing, we're moving the program to a different building. And I think my deciding factor is the fact that the building administration themselves is looking forward to having a more conducive atmosphere for their kids and hopefully we'll be able to provide a much better facility for them in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Centers?
I think that on my time on the board the last two and a half years, when it comes to facilities, the number one request I've heard from staff and from a couple of families is that we find another location for this program. I've heard of sewage backups, of problems with the elevators, just things, incidents after incidents. So I am excited that we have an opportunity to put them in a building that can hopefully fit their needs better and be just better living conditions, if you will.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. I would support the closing and relocation of the Skill Center only if this program would be not placed at Churchill High School. I feel these students deserve their own building, and it needs to be done in a manner that it's taken with time. I don't think getting that program moved for the next school year is advantageous, and it needs to have a lot of thought put into it to make sure that these, their needs are completely met. I know I won't be on the board when this comes around, however, I will be watching. And I truly hope that you collectively take into strong consideration that this program needs to be in a standalone building. With that, because I know the school definitely needs a lot of work, and you're right, Mr. Centers, the elevator doesn't work a lot, and a lot of times that, you know, if they have any kind of drills to move the students up and down from the second floor, it's not conducive. So, anyway, thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Previously, I had expressed concern because we had not really discussed much about the Western Wayne Skill Center. And fortunately, since then, I have been able to get more information provided from multiple sources. And I've learned that they have actually wanted to move, that they've asked to be relocated, which is significant, and that when you have a two-story building and you have students who are utilizing various means of transportation, like wheelchairs and so on, having an elevator that works is very critical. And that it's also difficult to make sure that all these children are safe, children, they're actually young adults, that all these young adults are safe, particularly if there's a fire drill or another reason to evacuate the building. So to my mind, it's not only a preference, it's a safety issue. That makes it a no-brainer. I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Like my colleagues, I will be supporting the moving of the students at the Western Wayne Skill Center to one of our other facilities. The staff and families have expressed a desire to be in a better facility, and if we have one available and are able to accommodate that, then I believe that we should. Again, the issue of being a two-story building with some of our disabled students is significant. There is $1.3 million of bond money that will follow these students to their other location to make whatever accommodations are needed in their new location so that that facility is appropriate for those students. Any additional bond money, should there be surplus bond money, that will go back into our bond pot, as you will, again, as all other bond money, so that we can increase the amount of money that we can spend for all students in Livonia Public Schools. There's additionally approximately $7.9 million of sinking fund money that's slated for that building over the next 10 years to try to get it to come up to a standard that we can be proud of. That 7.9 million in sinking funds that can then be diverted to many of our other buildings to bring their needs higher, better, get more things done that need to be done. For those who may not be very familiar with the Western Wayne Skill Center, just to fill you in a little bit, the Western Wayne Skill Center houses our 18- to 26-year-old young adults who have disabilities, who are finished with their high school program, but this services their needs to continue their programming and their education through 26 years old per state law and in order to help them assimilate into an independent adult life. We have such things going on at the Skill Center as home living, apartment living, and assimilating into the workforce. Many of our students go on to work from there in retail establishments, in childcare. There's a functioning greenhouse, a functioning kitchen, a functioning wood shop. There are many day-to-day life activities and workplace activities that we are helping to transition, this very special group of young adults, 18 to 26 years of age. So that's the population, if you're not familiar, that we're talking about here. Again, for all the reasons that have been stated and for those, I will be supporting this motion this evening. Mrs. Okwist?
Thank you, President Burton. I do believe I neglected to say, and I believe it was you, Mrs. Bonnefield, that shared, that all of the programs would remain available to all of our students and intact. This is not cutting of any programs or opportunities. It's simply moving the program in its entirety, including the staff, into a more optimal location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sometimes we have studied these things to such length, we forget that we didn't mention them tonight. Are there any other comments or questions from board members? We've all had an opportunity to share our thoughts, but are there any comments or questions before we take a vote? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 8, Personnel Matters. 8A is teachers for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2016-17 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mr. Winry, would you address this item for us, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All the teachers on the report before you have been interviewed, undergone an intensive screening process, and they've been deemed to be the most qualified for the positions for which they have been hired, and we recommend your approval of their employment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the superintendent or the board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take a roll?
Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8B, Resignation. That's for board information only. That is not an item that we need to vote on. The next item on our agenda is Item 8C, Retirement. May I have a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Sandra Christopherson, Miriam Fresh, Diane Hill, Deborah Reynolds, Colleen Rowe.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, thank you. There are five retiring employees on this report, and they represent an impressive total of over 121 years of service to the district. Four of the five have 26 and a half years or more of service to the district. So on behalf of staff and administration, I'd sure like to extend our thanks and appreciation for their many years of loyal and dedicated service, and we recommend to the board adoption of the resolutions of appreciation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
I don't think anyone hears this amazing.
Yep, welcome to the next chapter of your lives. Livonia Public Schools has been blessed to have such a large number of employees who have served for so very, very many years. Many of the folks on this document serve in our support roles, our clerks, our secretaries, et cetera, and our paraprofessionals. These folks are some of the backbone of our district that our children see every single day, and they are so valued for the service they provide. Our education experience would not be complete without the services rendered by these folks, and we just thank you very much for your service. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 9, Reports from the Superintendent. Mrs. Okwist?
Thank you, President Burton. I do have just a couple of highlights to share with you, but before, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. You know, there's certainly been some difficult decisions and deliberations made this evening, and I appreciate all that has gone into that from our community, from our staff, and from our board. It is really now incumbent upon our team to lead this work in this transition that puts students in their needs first. You have my commitment and that of, I know of, our cabinet team to work to support our school staff and their leadership to make these transitions, which we know will not be simple and will not be easy. However, it will be our focus and our committed work beginning tomorrow. There is nothing more important to us than assuring that our students have the best opportunities available to them. We know that we have tremendous people. I've long said that we are who we are in this district because of our people. So that, the team to my right, I know, will join me in this effort, and that work will begin immediately. But I do have a couple of highlights I'd like to share, as I normally do under reports from the superintendent, but I would have been remiss without being able to make those few comments. You know, we had the opportunity to share with you last week a really significant highlight for our district. We received a very prestigious designation this past week as we were named to the College Board's AP Honor Roll for the second time, one of only 433 districts, sounds like a lot, but across all of the United States and Canada, which totals over 12,500 districts. So to be one of 433 districts is certainly a point of pride. That is a direct result of the efforts of our tremendous staff and our very, very hard-working students. That effort is really extraordinary. We shared an article online with our community. We will also be sharing it in the dialogue, is something very important to share as a point of pride about our school district. Another brief piece, and I know I see some friends here from Garfield, so I wanted to give them a shout out, that Melissa Pilsner, the president of the Kiwanis Early Risers Club, has acknowledged Mrs. Kohler and her staff and all of the great kids, who was the winner of the $1,000 grant for Garfield Elementary School because their students collected an average of 4.55 pairs of shoes per student, which will be donated to those in need. It was the greatest number of all of our schools that participated. So they have been acknowledged for that, and we congratulate them. The Kiwanis Early Risers Club is just a great group of folks. They are early and they're lively in the morning, and I've enjoyed spending some time with them, and many of our schools participated. I'd like to thank all of them. This is truly a caring community, all of our schools, and so we'd like to congratulate Garfield. And we wish you and your family a peaceful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 10, Hearing from Board Members. 10A is the Second Reading of Board Policy EDDB Walkers and Riders. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, EDDB Walkers and Riders.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Scott, would you please address this item for us?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. I'd be happy to summarize for the board the changes to Board Policy EDDB entitled "Student Transportation: Walkers and Riders." As I shared with the board during the first reading at the November 14th board meeting, a sentence is added to the first paragraph to clarify the existing Board Policy on Transportation Eligibility. This sentence does not change the meaning of the existing policy. And also in the fifth paragraph, the words "school district" are added to accurately reflect the name of our school district. I bring Board Policy EDDB forward to the board recommending approval of the stated changes.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the superintendent or board members on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 10B, Second Reading of Board Policy EEB Wellness for Students. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, EEB Wellness for Students.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Ellis, would you address this item for us, please?
I would be very happy to do so. Thank you very much. Tonight, I will share the changes to this policy that were presented to the board during the study session of October 24th, the committee of the whole meeting on November 11th, and then the first reading of this policy during the board meeting on November 14th. The changes we are recommending will allow this Wellness for Students Policy EEB to meet the federal wellness policy regulations as outlined by the USDA Food and Nutrition Service Center. The revision includes two new headings with an accompanying paragraph for each. The new headings are District Wellness Committee and Fundraising. It also includes replacing an existing paragraph with a new paragraph under two existing headings, and that includes changes to the Physical Education and Physical Activity Opportunity Heading, as well as the Implementation and Measurement Heading. We also are going to add a new paragraph under an existing heading, and that new paragraph is under Other School-Based Activities Designed to Promote Student Wellness. We are also adding the words "or designee" to the third paragraph under Nutrition Standards, so it would read the superintendent or designee. And finally, we are making changes to the legal reference so that it more reflects the documents that we use to align this policy.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board or the superintendent on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis? Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 10C, Hearing from Board Members. As has become customary, rather than having seven of us repeat largely the same information and the same thanks and the same acknowledgements, we have asked one board member to take that role for each of us each meeting. Certainly afterward, our other board members are welcome to add any items that they would like to. Mr. Johnson is going to take care of that for us this evening. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. It's been a long evening so far, so I'll try and be brief, but I'm a lawyer, so it may take a while. First of all, I want to thank all of those who came tonight from CAS. Obviously, they're very passionate about their school. It's not easy to get up in front of a group like this and express your thoughts. They did it well, and we certainly appreciate it. It's been an up-and-down meeting. The good things are, we recognize Mrs. Laura and Mrs. McDonald for their years of service on the board. As we've said before, sometimes this is a very thankless job, but at the same time, it's extremely rewarding, getting to deal with the students and you watch them grow. You've been part of that. Now, as we said, you can sit home on Monday nights and watch us from afar and, you know, enjoy. Keep an eye on us. We may be calling you for historical reasons.
We may, we need her long-distance phone number. She travels frequently.
Do we need the overseas operator? Yeah. We figure we'll catch you on a boat somewhere. Congratulations go out to those employees who have chosen to retire. When you think the average of each of those individuals is approximately 24 years, it's unbelievable. And at the risk of embarrassing one of them, I've known Diane Hill since we were in high school. We even dated at one point.
No more information.
We'll leave it at that. She is just a shining example of what she's put in to the school district. I'm sure the other retirees have done it as well, and we can't be more fortunate to have those type of people in our district. It's sad to see them leave, but after those so many years, we can sort of understand it. Congratulations as well goes out to the three new teachers. Welcome aboard. I also want to thank the entire staff and all the employees who worked so diligently when we had the snowfall to get everything ready and safe for our kids to get back to school. It was a monumental task. They do it so seamlessly, you never know what they're doing, but you just show up to school and everything is fine. Also, thanks to all our employees, our cabinet, the staff, for everything you do throughout the year for all of our students. That's about it. I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone. For all of those out there that will be enjoying parties, please make good choices. Be safe and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, I open it up, but at this point, we have two very special honored board members this evening, and those are obviously Mrs. Laura and Mrs. McDonald. So I would like to ask if either one of them have any parting comments that they would like to give to us this evening before we close our meeting.
Thank you. I would just like to congratulate our newly elected board members, Karen Bradford and Crystal Frank. They're sitting to our right in the audience. Congratulations, welcome to the board. You will be a fine asset and will do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure being on this board and serving our community. I do look forward to being a citizen again in many, many ways. And like I shared with you earlier, I will be watching, and I look forward to, you know, coming and speaking at Audience Communications every once in a while, just like I did in the past. But I know everyone has the same ideas and passion for the school district, and I believe the biggest compliment for me this evening was when Mr. Johnson said that I advocated for the community and our citizens. And to me, that's what being on this board is about. It's about them, because without the citizens, without the people that bring their children to schools, we don't have a, we don't have a school district. So on that, thank you, everyone. And remember, tomorrow evening, if you have time, Blessings in the Backpack is filling bags, actually, of food, and they're actually going to be supplying a couple weeks' worth of food for the students in our school district that are in most need, and they do need volunteers tomorrow night. If you have the time, send me an email at the LPS, my LPS email, and I'd be more than happy to send the information on as to where you can go to help. So on that, have a happy holidays, and don't worry, I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Any other board members like to share any comments this evening, or superintendent? Mr. Johnson?
Let me make one other. You know, most of us are pretty blessed with what we have. There are a lot of people out there that are unfortunate. So I just issue a challenge to everybody tonight. Over the holidays, do a random act of kindness for someone less fortunate than yourself. Thank you.
I'm going to close out this evening with a thank you to our community, to our administration, to our committee members, and to my fellow board members. This has been a grueling experience for many, many, many people, not just this board. I thank you for your professionalism, for your respect, and for, bottom line, I truly believe every single individual who was involved in this process had a deep care for the well-being of students and families in Livonia Public Schools. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It is an honor to be part of this community. I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a Happy Kwanzaa, or whatever you and your family may celebrate. In our family, it's around a tree. Merry Christmas. Have a blessed season. Good night.